Can we have Mr. Wadsworth do the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wadsworth.
Good evening, City Council. To Mayor Burcroft, to our city treasurer, Ms. Page, to the administrative staff and listening audience. Today is Monday, May 24th, 2021, and this is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting. This meeting is being held electronically via the Zoom meeting telecommunications platform. Tonight's meeting ID number is 832-2683-6698. This meeting is being held pursuant to Public Act 254 of 2020 and the resolution declaring a local state of emergency adopted by City Council on March 29th, 2021 by Resolution Number 21-093, which permits the remote audience by members of a public body using telephonic or video conferencing means in certain circumstances, and to allow the public business of the Romulus City Council to be conducted in a manner that permits both the general public and members of the public bodies to participate by electronic means under circumstances allowed by law. Members of the public bodies must further identify specifically by stating the county, city, township, or village and state from which he or she is attending the meeting remotely. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online from the Zoom meeting application. To join the meeting by phone, call 1-646-558-8656. And when prompted, enter the meeting ID number, and once again, it's 832-2683-6698, followed by the pound sign. During the public comment portion of the meeting, the raise hand method will be used to address the City Council. Citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment section of the meeting. And at this time, we will have roll call. And please, council members, don't forget to state your location. Councilwoman Abdo?
Present, Romulus, Michigan, Wayne County.
Councilman Barton? Did he make it?
I don't know what's going on.
Well, he's, I know he's, he's present, so I think they're still trying to get this audio working for him. Councilwoman Roscoe?
Here, Wayne County, Romulus, Michigan.
Councilwoman Tally?
Here, Romulus, Michigan.
Councilman Wadsworth?
Here, Romulus, Michigan.
Councilwoman Webb?
Here, Romulus, Michigan, Wayne County.
And Councilwoman Williams?
Here, City of Romulus.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum for tonight's meeting. Mr. Barton, have you been able to, your audio, is it working? All right, we're going to keep working on that to get him joined into the meeting. Tonight's meeting agenda is as follows. Number one agenda, number two minutes, number three petitioner, number four chairperson's report, five mayor's report, six clerk's report, seven treasurer's report, eight public comment, nine unfinished business, ten new business, eleven warrant, twelve communication, and number thirteen adjournment. And a motion would be in order to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So move to accept the agenda as presented.
We need a second on the approval of the agenda.
Thank you. It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe for the acceptance of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Next on the agenda, item two, A, approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting held on Monday, May 10th, 2021, at 7:30 PM.
Move for May the 10th of 2021 at 7:30 PM.
Support.
Been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Webb for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on Monday, May 10th, 2021, at 7:30 PM. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Number three is petitioner. Tonight, we do have a petitioner on the agenda. This is a special land use request from Miller Pipeline. The location is 6777 Metroplex. And what I'd like to do is ask if our city planner, Carol Mays, would introduce our petitioners for this evening?
I would be happy to. Good evening, Madam Clerk, Madam Treasurer, City Council members, and I'd like to, oh, and Mayor. Mayor's there too. Good evening, Mayor. Our petitioners are here tonight. You can probably see them. John Romano is representing DNG Construction Company, and I see Josh Sargeant from Miller Pipeline. I'm not sure which one's going to do the talking, but we also have a site plan that, Ellen, are you going to be sharing the screen for that, or am I?
I, are you able, we can, I believe Dejean is going to share the screen for you?
Great.
I believe so. If not, he may still be working with Mr. Barton. So Carol, what we can do is we'll make you a co-host, and you can go ahead and share your screen.
Perfect.
All right. Okay.
Alrighty. There it is. I'm not sure if I did it or Dejean did it.
It's perfect. You've got it, Carol.
Dejean did it. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, any one of our petitioners, you're welcome to start.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Sure, great.
Hello, everyone. My name is John. I'm with DNG Building Company. And I am here with Josh with Miller Pipeline. And we are here before you to present Miller Pipeline, who is currently a tenant in Romulus on Metroplex. They're a couple of doors down. And their current facility was, they were growing out of their current facility. They needed a newer, larger facility to move into. And what we did as property owners, we purchased the property with the building, 6777 Metroplex, and then we purchased the land south of that. And we are in the process of combining the two parcels for Miller Pipeline. As Carol had stated, or as you guys have seen in our packet, these guys being a contractor need special land use for the outside storage of their materials. And with that outside storage, we have proposed to provide screening in means of painting the fence, putting plastic slots within the fence, and then painting, I'm sorry, painting, installing pines around Metroplex to help with the screening of the materials. The materials will be, as you can see on the screen, will be stored on the east side of the property line, behind the building, and basically along that east property line. Along with the screening, what we've done to the property is the property's been vacant for a couple of years, so we've had some improvements that we've had to make to the building, not only for Miller Pipe, but also for the building department, planning department. They've had some recommendations as far as pavement improvements. We've done some lighting improvements. We added a dumpster in the back. And then we've done quite a bit of renovation on the interior for Miller Pipe regarding paint, carpet, and some addition of some office space. That's really about what we're here for, is special land use for Miller Pipe. That's our presentation.
John?
My name's Tina.
Hi, Tina.
Yo, hi. I'm talking to Mr. Wadsworth.
Yes, Mrs. Tally, may I? Councilwoman Tally, may I speak now?
Yes, Mr. Wadsworth.
Thank you. I've read this, and I understand what's here, but for the public, you know, to hear the word pipeline is, this pipeline is taking something to a different pipeline, or what's in the pipeline, or explain that to us.
You want me to jump in, John? Yes, Josh, please. Thank you.
Mr. Wadsworth, in a nutshell, good evening, everyone. Nice to meet everyone. Miller Pipeline's been in business about 68 years. We are serving DTE Energy as their largest natural gas contractor. So what we're doing is we're working block by block in Detroit metro areas. We completed the repiping of Dearborn since 2015 in Michigan, if you will. So right now, we are undergoing all the work to rehabilitate DTE system, replace all the aging infrastructure, if you will. And we've got other offices in Grand Rapids. That's where I am currently, Copacabana, Escanaba. We serve both SEMCO Energy and DTE Energy, Mr. Wadsworth. So they're our customer. They're probably the third largest customer at Miller Pipeline, and we're in about 26 states. So we've, we've outgrown since 2015. Started with five crews, and we are definitely above 20 crews right now, and the growth is good. So had very little room at the old property, wanted to retain our business operations in Romulus.
Other, but the point being, the pipeline, what goes in the pipeline?
What goes in the pipeline that we perform, the pipeline work that we perform for DTE?
Right.
It's all natural gas to provide process, industrial load, heat load for residential customers, that type of, that type of energy. So it's all natural gas.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from council? I just had, oh, I'm sorry, who was that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, go ahead. I just want to remind everybody that action will be taken on this petitioner's request under the clerk's report 6E.
Through the chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb?
The gentleman, the first gentleman that was speaking, and I can't see anyone because there's still this, this print is up, taken up my screen. So if they could remove that, if we're finished with it. Thank you. Well, the first question that I had, and I think the first gentleman did answer, it was 6911 and 6777. Now, that's the special land use request, correct, for 6777, the address?
Carol, maybe Carol can correct me if I'm wrong. Being that we're combining the parcels into one, I think the special.
Okay, not to cut you off, that's what I needed to hear. So you are combining 6777 as well as 683526911? All three?
I can actually answer that. It's just the two, 6777 will be combined with 6835.
Okay.
Your current location is at, at 691111.
Okay.
Yes, that's where they are, just down the street.
Okay, so how far is that from, so are you going, so you're using the 6911 address as well as the other two addresses, correct?
I believe the 6911 they're going to move, move out of.
Oh, okay.
They are moving out of, and they're, and they're moving into this facility.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm clear now. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
We like these kind of applicants and businesses. They grow, and they stay in town, and they just move down the street.
Yeah, just down the street. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from council?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Webb, is that Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Was I mistaken that one of the gentlemen said that they were going to expand both properties?
No, not expand. We're combining both parcels. They're expanding their operations. Their operations, they've outgrown their current facility and are looking to move into a larger facility because of their added growth that they have.
So you are still on, this, this particular company will still own both locations?
Uh, no. The 6911 they're going to move out of, and they are going to move into the, this, this current, the, the, the location that was up on the screen, 6777 and 6835, I believe it, what it was. So they're moving down the street. They're, they're literally moving two doors down.
So the pipeline, where would the pipeline be located? Behind the building? The side of the building?
Yeah, the pipe will be behind the building. Carol, if you've, if we can put that picture back up, I can show you. Along the east side of the property line, it's hashed out on where the pipe is going to be stored.
You know, I think what we have to maybe clarify is, is that, I think it's because of their name, it's confusing. There's no pipeline going, you know, underneath this property or Metroplex. This is, this is the storage. They're a contractor. So it's the pipe that's being stored. And yes, let's, can I shoot it? There it is. So this area, flash is, is the, where the pipe is going to be stored.
Unmute me.
No, Carol. You said the, where will the pipe be stored?
So on this graphic, I can't tell if you're, you can see it with my pointer, but do you see the hash mark on the east side? It's like the east side of the property and then just down a little bit. So look to the very, you know, to the right side. Look at the, you know, it's to the right of the building. That whole side.
Yeah, Carol, I don't want to step in, but it would be plastic pipe that is stored prior to us taking it to a job site to install downtown for DTE Energy. So it would be just typical yellow plastic pipe on nicely fabricated pipe racks that we could use a fork truck to load it onto a truck, if you will. So there's no permanent pipe anywhere. It's just our supplies that we need to perform our jobs.
So it's, it's absolutely a storage for other jobs, not your particular company storing these on the regular basis?
Yeah, it's storage for our, our company to do the work for our customers. It's just some pipe storage that we have to have that we can't house inside the building. So.
You know, as long as it's behind the building, that it's not in front, you know, I don't see a problem with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And real quick, what, what are you guys going to do with the 6911 property? Just curious.
Well, I'll, I'll give you my best curiosity answer, Ms. Tally. We have a sister company by the name of HydroX that does soft excavation with vacuums so that we don't damage natural gas lines. So we're not digging with mechanized equipment.
Okay.
It's all, all in accordance with the Michigan 811 law. So, long story short, I am trying to sweet talk them into leasing the building. We're, we're not an owner, we're not an owner at 6911. We're, we're a tenant there.
Right.
We're trying to talk them into growing their operations and keeping the Romulus family happy. So I'm, I'm not there yet, but we're working on it.
Okay, no, thank you. I was just curious. Was there any more communication from council? Any more questions? Can anybody hear me? It's kind of a bad reception there, Mr. Barton.
Oh. Can you hear me, Ms. Tally?
We can hear you, but you got a lot of echoing. There's a lot of echoing going on.
About now.
Still a lot of echoing, yeah.
I don't know what's happening.
Yeah, we getting a lot of feedback. Okay, okay. Madam Clerk?
If there's, if there are no more questions, and again, just as a reminder, you'll take action on this special land use request under agenda item 6E.
Sounds good.
All right. That takes us to number four, which is the chairperson's report. I guess we'll try to get Mr. Barton in there. Let's see what happens. I'll unmute him and see how it's going.
Okay.
Mr. Barton? Okay, all right. So Ms. Tally, why don't you go ahead under the chairperson's report?
So since Ms. Abdo said that she had to set up prior to, with Mr. Barton, please, we're going to turn it over to Ms. Abdo.
Well, thank you. I would like to ask for a memorial resolution for Deputy Fire Chief Jerome Paul Lattic.
Hang up now. Oh, move, or support.
Okay, thank you. In 1971, he became a paid-on firefighter in Romulus. His focus, commitment, discipline helped lay the groundwork for the fire, stellar fire department we have here today. He represented Romulus after over 37 years of service to this community.
Can you hear me?
You said that was a memorial resolution, Ms. Abdo?
I did. Yes, we can hear you, John. You sound normal now.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Is I'm in now?
Yeah.
Okay, airplane pilots is in. We had a little turbulence. We'll be okay. We'll, all right. Thank you, Ms. Tally.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Great job. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
So John, what I asked for was a memorial resolution. I don't know if you, didn't know if you hear, heard for Jerome Paul Lattic, Deputy Fire Chief Jerome Paul Lattic, and Mr. Wadsworth, seconded.
Okay. Okay, so.
As far as we got.
Memorial resolution by Ms. Abdo, supported by Mr. Wadsworth. Ms. Abdo? I'd like to, I'd like to make some comments also. Okay, I will. If I could, I knew Jerry and his wife and the kids as they all had to grow up. I worked with Jerry back in my days in the 70s and 80s with the Sheriff's Department. I was on numerous runs with him. We went to St. Alawish's at 5 o'clock mass. Our, our, our kids actually, we all sat in the, what's some called the cry room together. And Jerry was a good man. He was a good family man, a good husband. He was a good fireman. He loved this town. He loved his job. May he rest in peace. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wadsworth. Any other comments? Mr. Wadsworth? Yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
John?
Yes, Ms. Abdo, I think you had some other things.
I did, thank you. And on a happy note, I wanted to wish Mary Ann Rizner her happy 93rd birthday. I know she's watching, and so I'd like to say happy birthday to her. She's been instrumental in our community.
And I'll say the same thing, Mary Ann. Happy birthday. Same to, say happy birthday. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Abdo.
And through the chair, John, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Webb.
Happy birthday, Mary Ann, and thank you for your friendship down through the years.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Okay. Next, I have, if you have no more comments, I want to put a city clerk on the spot. I don't see, whoa, was John Barton messing with me? Mrs. Braggs has some very honored accolades that was presented to her representing the city of Romulus. I don't know if she wanted to do this, explain some of her accomplishments on my report, or does she want to do it on her report or communications? But I just want to say, we are so proud of our city clerk for all she's done and doing for the city of Romulus.
Yeah, you put me on the spot, Councilman Barton. No, I had the honor, privilege of singing, performing the National Anthem for the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. This is a national organization, and to be asked to do that and from, before my peers from all over the country, and it was quite an honor. I have been nominated Clerk of the Year for the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks. So it's a nomination, but I love my job. It's a lot, it's a lot of work, but I am honored. It was an honor to represent Romulus, to represent the state of Michigan. So, thank you, Mr. Barton.
Oh, you're welcome.
I'm very humble, very humble. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you for all you do. We really appreciate it.
And thank you, Ms. Clerk, for your dedication, your hard work, and I know you are humble, but that was such an honor to have been asked to sing the National Anthem in front of your peers from the United States and abroad.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Webb.
All right. On that note, that concludes the chairperson's report.
To Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Tally for approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Mr. Wadsworth? Yes. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. Number five is the mayor's report.
Good evening, City Council, our clerk, deputy clerk, treasurer, and listening audience. First, I wanted to thank everybody who made a successful, clean sweep on Saturday. Had Penske employees there, over 25 that pitched in and helped as kind of a sponsor. We had employees, thank you to all the electeds that took their time. Special thanks to Mike LaScascia, who kind of spearheaded things. And we are a cleaner, better community because of the efforts. And hopefully those will keep an eye on it and take ownership and keep those parks and areas clean. Another thing, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to speak on, and tonight is Captain Josh Monty's last council meeting before he retires. And I wanted to take a chance to personally extend my thanks to him, you know, especially during, not just the years where he's contributed to our city, but while JD was ill, he and Darren stepped up in a big way. He's always been a stand-up guy who's helped with anything. He is the, really, the, the customer service model that you want in any role. He's helped us with budgetary issues. Tonight, as you know, one of the issues that he kind of inherited is, is up for action item, but just an overall great person. And I can't thank him from the bottom of my heart. I could not have done this job without a quality person in the police department like Josh. And I believe that Chief Fannus wanted to say a couple words, and then I will also get into my action items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Fannus, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council, Madam Clerk, Madam Treasurer, and listening audience. I wanted to take a minute to publicly acknowledge Captain Monty at his last council meeting. As you know, I've only had the opportunity to work with Captain Monty for the last 15 months, but I've been in the police business for 34 years and worked with many fine officers and police administrators in that time. And I want to tell you something that you already know, but Captain Monty is second to none of them. His commitment and dedication to the city of Romulus and the Romulus Police Department is something most cities and chiefs can only hope for, and something that I have truly appreciated. And I appreciated him helping me get up to speed. So I know I'll speak to him again, but I wanted to express my gratitude for an outstanding job and wish him the best. Josh leaves some very big chills to fill, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Through the chairs, if I may?
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Webb.
I would. I'm honored to make the last motion to concur with. to concur with the administration and authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached contract for services of independent contractor with the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission Administrative Assistant, Mary Ellen Bowen.
I'll support that.
It's been motioned by Mrs. Webb, reported by Mr. Wadsworth, for the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, grant independent contractor, MIDC Administration Assistant.
I just have one thing to say, is that I wanted to make that motion, the last one, for Josh. Such a dedicated, committed, true officer of the law, who has served the city of Romulus with dignity. I mean, it can hardly get any better, but I'm grateful that we do have police officers, firefighters, that we have those first responders that every citizen in this community should take off their hat, too, because we do have one of the best. Whether anyone believes it or not, just move here and find out. We have the best, and thank you. Thank you so much, Josh.
John?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Wadsworth.
If I could, I'm not going to give a big long speech, but Josh, from one cap to another, a job well done. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, to the Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Webb.
Now, Captain Monty, we didn't agree on a lot of things, but that showed that we were human, you know, because you don't have to agree to be able to get along. But one thing, I could say many things, but one thing that stands out about you, Captain Monty, is that you never stop trying. You never stop trying, and I can truly say that from the heart compared to a lot of others. You never stop trying to make things different, to make things better for not only the employees, but also the residents. And this city is really gonna miss a dedicated officer of the law. I wish you well in wherever you go and whatever you do, and just don't forget about us. Keep us in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
To the Chair.
Yes, go ahead. Is that Ms. Abdo?
No.
Ms. Roscoe? Okay, I'm here doubled. Go ahead.
Captain Monty, I just want to say I appreciate all your hard work and your dedication to our city, all these issues. And to me personally, I mean, whenever there was any issue, you're always concerned, and you always ask it. You always make sure that everything was okay, and on a professional and a personal level, I just want to say how much I appreciate all your dedication. And it's gonna be a great loss to our city, so I wish you and your people all the best.
To the Chair.
Yes, Ms. Abdo.
I would just like to thank Captain Monty for his service. Thank you.
Monty, I give you all the honors that you've been, you were very professional. You were honest, fair in the police department. I think we have a great police department, and you represent it very well. I'd like to thank the administration for, administration that the police department was honest and open and transparent. And Monty, you will be, like all the council people said, you'll be missed, but you did such a great job. Thank you, Monty. Now, there's one thing I want to mention, because my microphone and communication is kind of different tonight. Was there a motion on that, or was just a speech?
A motion.
Okay, was that by Ms. Webb and supported by Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Okay. If there's no other discussions, roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, and I'm experiencing the same bad echo, Mr. Chairman, so I'll try to keep it short. The next one is a recommendation from Roberto Scapatici, DPW Director, and Steve Hitchcock. This one is to concur the administration and authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached construction inspection, MDOT third-party agreement with road engineering. That's for the Beverly Road Phase Two project. The attached agreement proposal outlines a construction service plan that cost one eighty-two, eight sixty-three, and thirty-nine cents. Please note that eighty percent of that cost will be paid for by the state of Michigan. Those funds have been confirmed and available out of the capital outlay major roads account that's listed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that, that we approve the Beverly Road Phase Two tri-party agreement with the state of Michigan.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for the Beverly Road Phase Two tri-party agreement with the state of Michigan. Any discussion? Hear no discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The next action, there's actually two separate motions. This request came from Mary Jr., our DDA Director. The first is to concur the administration and authorize no-fee permits for activities during this summer's 2021 events taking place on the first, second, and fourth Friday in June, July, and August.
Need a motion?
Part of motion.
Support.
Was that by Ms. Webb?
Ms. Williams.
Ms. Williams, who supported that?
I did, Roscoe.
Okay, Ms. Roscoe. I'm sorry for the, I can't hear. I'm sorry. It's been motioned by Ms. Williams, supported by Ms. Roscoe, to concur with the administration and authorize no-fee permit for the activities during the 2021 summer events taking place on the first, second, and fourth Friday in June, July, and August. End discussion. Hear no discussion? Roll call vote. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you. And the second motion before you consider is a recommendation from Mary Jr. This is to concur with the administration and authorize the road closures for Hunt Street between Goddard and Bibbins that would be beginning at three P.M. and ending at ten P.M. on the first, second, and fourth Fridays, again, in June, July, and August that correspond for those events.
I'll make the motion to support.
Support.
It's been motioned by, was that Ms. Williams?
Yeah, that's.
Supported by Ms. Abdo. Well, I'm having a bad time here. It's to concur with the administration and authorize the following road closures. Hunt Street between Gardner Road and Bibbin Street, beginning at three P.M. and ending at ten P.M. on the first, second, and fourth Fridays in June, July, and August. End discussion. Hear no discussion? Roll call vote. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The last item is for your information only. I was gonna call in Director Kraus, but you know what? Why don't you read over the memo because of the audio echo issues? In all fairness to the seriousness of this training that went on, we're very proud of it. We'll have him talk about that at another time. But there's some good information about what was done in the city of Romulus with our department and some other departments. So with that, that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just for the record, we're trying to figure out what's going on with the echoing, so please bear with us. We're kind of in the background trying to make, and we apologize for the, you know, for the technical difficulty, but we are working on it. That takes us to the Clerk's Report. And before I start my report, I just want to thank the Deputy Clerk for filling in for me while I was away. He did a fantastic job, and so thank you, Deputy Clerk Hockenhall, for all that you do. I have five items under my report. Item six A, this is a study session request from Roberto Scapatici, Director of DPW, and he is requesting a one-hour study session for June the seventh, 2021, at six o'clock P.M. And this is to discuss the review changes in engineering standards.
Need a motion?
I'll to the Chair. I'd like to make that motion to accept the request from Roberto. For.
The motion by, this is Webb, supported by Mr. Wadsworth, for a study request from Roberto Scapatici, DPW Director, for June the seventh, at six P.M. to discuss a change in engineer standards. End discussion. Hear no discussion? Roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Agenda item six B, this is a study session request from our city treasurer, Stacy Page. She's requesting a thirty-minute study session for June the seventh, 2021, at seven o'clock P.M. And this is to discuss the quarterly investment report.
Slow move, Mr. Chairman, for June the seventh, seven P.M.
Support. Who supported that?
Ms. Roscoe.
Ms. Roscoe, okay. The motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for study session request by Treasurer Page for June the seventh, at seven P.M. to discuss the quarterly investment report. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Item six C, we have another study session request, and this is from Captain Josh Monty. And he is requesting a forty-five-minute study session for June the fourteenth, 2021, at six o'clock P.M. And this is to discuss the leasing of marked patrol vehicles and the purchase of Motorola radios for police and dispatch.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. For a question requested by Josh Monty, Captain, for June fourteenth, 2021, at six P.M. Support.
The motion by Ms. Roscoe, was that supported by Ms. Abdo?
I am.
Who?
Williams.
Williams, okay. A study session request by Josh Monty, police captain, for June fourteen, at six P.M. To discuss the leasing and marked patrol vehicles and purchase of Motorola radios for police and dispatch. End discussion. Hear no discussion? Roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you. Six D. And at the March twenty-second, 2021 regular meeting, Council approved the honorary street sign dedication policy by Resolution Number twenty-one dash zero eight seven. The first five applications have been successfully vetted through various city departments. For your review and approval are the 2021 honorary street sign dedications for the following honorees. Mary Ann Rizner, Sheldon Chandler, Ella Coleman, Nathaniel E. Butler, and Duane Martin.
Make a motion to support the honorary dedication applications.
Support.
Motion by, Ms. Williams, supported by, who supported that?
Ms. Roscoe.
Ms. Roscoe? For approval of the 2021 honorary street sign dedications. End discussion.
I'll to the Chair.
Yes.
I would like to say something.
Ms. Webb?
When I looked through my packet, I was pleasantly surprised, but I would like to say, when I seen Mr. Duane Martin's name there, I have been his neighbor for over fifty years, and I know what that man did, what he has done, and what his family continues to do in this city. And it is remarkable. He was the director of our Recreation Department here in the city. A lot of people may not know that because they did not know the man. So I would let, tell everybody, all of the applicants who have submitted to be voted on by the city council, if we don't know them or know anything about them, let's do a little bit of research, because Mr. Martin was a fantastic man. He was a gentleman. His wife Betty worked for the city as well. We all were in this community together, and one more person, which, who was my neighbor, Mr. Nathaniel Butler. And I met him when he was a Wayne County Sheriff here, when I moved here. We need to get to know some of our people, and Mrs. Rizner, bless her heart, a wonderful, wonderful woman. And these are people that I have known for fifty years, and people that I know have done something in this community, and all of the applicants have done something, and I'm glad to see their names here in this list. But I guess because of my neighbors, Mary lived, you know, a few blocks down off Grant, and Mr. Martin, two streets over from me, you know, fifty years, I know what these people have done. I know how much dedication, how much time has been put into this community, what they have done. And I appreciate all of the applicants. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, motion approved.
And the last item under the Clerk's Report is the approval of the special land use requests from the petitioners, from Miller Pipeline, as was, they made their presentation under Agenda Item Number Three, and so your approval is being requested would be in order for their special land use request.
To the Chair, if I may, I'd like to make that motion to approve the special land use request from Miller. Through the chair, if I may, I'd like to make that motion to approve the special land use request from Miller Pipeline.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Roscoe. For approval of the Miller Pipeline. End discussion. Here no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, City Council. That concludes the Clerk's Report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Number 7 is the Treasurer's Report.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and listening audience. I just wanted to thank you for the request and approval of the meeting on June 7th. And that's all I have on my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this takes us to number 8, which is Public Comment. And this is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address City Council. The raise hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. If you have joined the meeting online, use the raise hand icon from the meeting app. Tap the microphone icon to unmute when acknowledged and mute yourself when finished. If you've dialed in from a touchstone phone, press the star 9 from your phone to raise your hand. And then press star 6 from your phone to unmute yourself when you've been acknowledged. And again, press star 6 to mute yourself. After you've been acknowledged, please state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Upon expiration of your three minutes, you will be muted. Additional time will be upon the approval of the chairperson. As a reminder, citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of public comment. Mr. Chair, we do have a hand raised. And it looks like this is from Mr. Heimberger. Go ahead, Mr. Heimberger.
Good evening. This is Tony Heimberger, officer of the office. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Now, is the city concerned about the I-275 project through the Michigan Department of Transportation? Since they are going to be redoing bridges and I-275, will that affect the new bike path extension that is going underneath I-275? And do we have some safeguards in place to make sure that nothing happens to that? Because we are spending our money on that, and I really don't want anything to get ruined. That's number 1. Number 2, what is the update at Hanan and Northline Rome? When's the approximate time for opening, so on, so et cetera? Some information would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heimberger. Are there any other requesting to speak from the public? Mr. Chair, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we'll close that part out.
Number 9 is unfinished business. Number 10 is new business.
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Wisworth.
If I could, is Roberto still here?
Yes, he is, sure.
Okay, my question is, Roberto, this past week, a lot of us at this end of town got a letter about the Frank Poet Drain. What actually triggered this? And what does this mean?
So, well, first of all, good evening, Council, Madam Clerk, Madam Treasurer, and Mayor. That letter that was put out by Wayne County, it's a request from, and don't quote me exactly, I believe it is Allen Park that wants a drain cleaning. So they're assessing the whole district that is around the Franken Poet. So if you're in the district, you got the letter, but they're requesting some work to be done. And Wayne County has to notify everybody that would be impacted. If Allen Park decides to vote the work to happen, the users or the tributary parcels would be impacted potentially with a financial cost to that drain cleaning.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Here, Roberto, while you're on, I know that there's no impact to the bike path. But on the Hanan Northline, do you have any update from that on progress that you want to mention? Or do you just want to do it in writing? Up to you.
No, I can mention it, you know, as far as the bike path goes, yeah, there's going to be no impact to our bike path with the I-275 project. M.DOT knows about our bike path. They're funding it. And there's stipulations of where they're going to work on those bridges. They're more or less doing parapet walls and everything above the bridge deck. As it relates to the Wayne County project on Northline in Hanan, that's still about a month out before that's wrapped up, or maybe a little bit more. There's been a lot of, there's been a lot of moving chairs and moving parts with Wayne County to be able to get a real good, accurate schedule. And I've got a reminder in my calendar to take it up with some of the folks I know there that have switched positions. But we're trying to keep our ear to the ground on that project. And last I heard, it was still a month out.
Thanks, Roberto.
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Abdo.
Roberto, speaking about the Frank Poet Drain, again, I heard you say that because Allen Park is requesting work done, that other people, we may be impacted financially. Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, and that's just a caveat to this process. Though it's not a city process, that's the county process. Whenever the county works on a drain jurisdiction, if there's not enough money in their standard operating costs, then they assess everybody that's in the district that receive benefit from the work. Now, I can't speak to whether Romulus residents would be affected by that cost or where the work might happen. But that's why that information is out there for somebody to either attend or see that Board of Review for the drain work that's being requested.
All right, so this is not drain work on the Frank Poet Drain here in Romulus?
At this time, I don't know that, and no, I don't believe so. Like, you know, as I mentioned, this is stemming from another municipality.
But we end up paying the bills. Is that what?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't agree with that. Mr. Chair, if there are no more, if there is no more new business from Council, Josh Monte has requested to speak. He would like to address City Council under new business.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Captain Monte.
Thank you, Council, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, Madam Treasurer. I just want to just take this opportunity to say it's been an amazing pleasure to work with each and every one of you. Many of you I've known for a long, long time. And it's been truly a pleasure to serve the community at Romulus. You're like my second family, maybe my first family, because I think I spend more time with you than my own family. So I just want to say thank you to each and every single one of you. It's been a pleasure. And like I said, it's been a pleasure serving the residents of Romulus the last 25 or 24 years. So thank you guys very much. I'm absolutely speechless from your words today. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes, uh-huh. Go ahead.
And since we have Captain Monte still on before he tries to disappear, I would ask for a resolution for Captain Monte. He really deserves it, for the Council to recognize, not only just in words, but in writing, his great work. And again, I say we're going to miss you. I'm going to miss disagreeing with you, Monte. I'll get past it. Thank you.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Williams, supported by Mr. Wisworth for a resolution. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Through the chair, if I may, I'd like to say just one more thing to Monte. I'm sure my colleagues would all give you a standing ovation. But if I stood up, then you may have to do your last run. Because I knocked something over, you know, break a leg.
All right, that's a good one. That's a good one, Ms. Webb.
Mr. Chair, our City Treasurer, Stacy Page, has a question that she would like to ask Mr. Scapatici.
Okay.
Thank you. I know Ms. Abdo talked about a couple of questions, and I have a couple as well for the drain. Because of course, when the tax bills go out, we get the phone calls. At this meeting, is this an opportunity, obviously, to ask questions? But is a decision made that night? Or is it a decision that's made later? And do you know if they send out letters again, letting people know what the decision is and approximately what the cost is before it actually hits the tax bill?
Good evening, Madam Clerk. You know, I just, I don't have those answers tonight. I don't want to say the wrong information. I've been cued in very little on this. It's the Drain Commissioner that puts this program on. And just communication hasn't been that good lately with Wayne County. And no, you know, no detriment to them. It's just, there's a lot of moving parts over at the county right now. And I found out this through some of the assessments that came through accidentally into my office. I didn't even get the original copy. But I would say if you're in the district, attend and ask those questions. I'll try to get some additional information and pass it on to Council. But I just don't have that at this time.
I understand. Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may, I received my letter today. But I received calls last week from some of my neighbors. And I didn't have an answer for them because I didn't have an explanation. But Stacy, here is a number for more information. Area code 313-312-9825. And it is saying that, can the decision of the Board of Determination be appealed? And the answer is yes, if a person feels aggrieved by the Board's determination of necessity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any more new business from Council? Okay, that takes us to number 11, warrant for approval is warrant 21-10. Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion that we pay warrant 21-10 in the following amounts. General Fund, $110,860.97. Major Street Fund, $2,691.32. Local Street Fund, $14,063.21. Public Safety Fund, $49,956.98. Cable TV, $1,072. Merriman Road Special Assessment, $169.03. Oakwood SAD, $90.78. Rich and Rubbish Collection Fund, $4,704.79. 911 Service Fund, $9,996.87. NARC Forfeiture State, $442.03. Library Fund, $10,061.93. DDA, $11,369.17. Tifa District 2, $2,056.75. Water and Sewer Fund, $694,499.66. Motor Vehicle, $7,395.88. Technology Services, $269.35. Retiree Insurance Benefits, $133,586.20. Revolving Fund, $1,542.50. Delinquent Personal Property Fund, $65,191.24. Payroll Fund, $213,440.3. Total All Funds, $1,333,460.69.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally. To pay warrant number 21-10 for $1,333,460.69. End discussion. Here no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
Number 12 is Communication.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
So I got to put my comments in about Captain Monte. I was, I guess, having technical issues. I couldn't talk. So I was a little PO'd, but amen. But anyway, I want to throw my shout-outs to Captain Monte as well. Just, mine are more selfish. Captain Monte, I don't know if he's even still on here. I just want to know who's going to do the Martin Luther King walks and coordinate. I want to know who's going to do the Good Friday walk and coordinate all of that. So mine is more selfish. So I think we need to have that name submitted before you leave about here, Captain Monte. I'm just saying. So I'll get with you after the meeting, so we can talk about who's going to take over those roles, okay? Just saying. But no, I'm going to miss you, Captain Monte. We talked about this a little. I'm going to so miss you, seriously. It's just, it's bittersweet. I'm happy for you, but it's just going to be missing you. So just think about us every now and again, if you could, please. Just, every once in a while, it would be nice. So, no, thank you for your service. It's just so appreciated. Thank you. And then the last thing, just a quick announcement. I just want everybody, just make everybody, just be alert of what's going on in our school district. Just know, it's going in a very positive direction. And we need to take note of what's going on with our school district. So just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally.
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Abdo.
Yes, I just want to thank all the people in the community and on Council who donated to the sponsor, a Student to Prom campaign. We ended up giving them enough money to sponsor 32 students to prom. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes. Ms. Williams.
Yes, I would like to ask for a memorial resolution for Dr. John Golden Jr. His father, Dr. John Golden Senior, actually started the first nightclub in Romulus, which now is called the Upscale Wayhouse Lounge. And when I first came to Romulus back in the 70s, you had The Temptation, The Four Tops, Marvin Gaye. All those type of Motown entertainers frequent that venue. And Dr. John Golden Jr. is the son of Senior. And I'm telling you, he is someone to really recognize and really to be proud of. He graduated from Romulus High School in 1976. Following high school, John earned an associate degree at Lincoln Junior College. He studied at Wayne State University and received a Bachelor's of Business Administration. Then he studied at the University of Maryland Global Campus for his doctorate. He studied also at Western Michigan University, receiving another Master's Administration. Central Michigan University, receiving a Master's of Science Administration. And in May of 2021, he achieved his lifelong dream, his Doctorate of Education and Technology. He was an employee with the United States Government for 34 years under numerous divisions. And recently, he was an employee of the Department of Army directly, P.E.O.I.E.W. And S. As an Assistant Program Manager. He spent a lifetime serving his country, including an appointed job, Second Lieutenant, Army Reserve in 2014. Just, just an awesome young man. Life ended so early. Life ended so early, so I, I would definitely, uh, like to acknowledge, you know, his accomplishments and his wife and his daughter with a resolution from city council. And if the mayor would like, and if the mayor would like to also present the family with a proclamation, the family would really be appreciative. Thank you.
I'll support that, John.
Okay. The motion by Ms. Williams, supported by Ms. Abdo for memorial resolution. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
And through the chair, just one more thing. The Latin Harp is still at Romulus High School, starting at eleven, since the school is back in. We start at eleven and we're done at one thirty. Um, as I've always said, the only thing residents need is their ID and their, I'm sorry, their name and their address. And, uh, we're still servicing people, so it's still a great need. So if you know anyone that's in need of some extra food, they're more than welcome to come. Thank you.
Is there any more communication? If not, it takes us to number thirteen, adjournment, and the time is eight forty three.
So moved.
Support.
The motion by Mr. Wasworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
For adjournment, Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are adjourned. You guys have a good night. Thank you.
Have a good evening, everybody.